Call the meeting door, please rise with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have any... I don't either. Peyton for Dilworth their presentation? I'm just worried he's in Dilworth. I just, I just thought of that now because this isn't like him. I don't.
Well, we can do it at the end. We have three numbers.
Yeah, sorry. So Brooke, if you can find anything, please, thank you, appreciate it.
I've got an email.
You might have him to call me.
I might have an email from him.
Yeah, well, I'll shoot him an email. I'm sorry to interrupt a meeting like that.
Who is?
Just, I'll shoot him an email. I'll still want. So Brooke, calling that, all board members are present and along with Brooke. And then we have a guest as well from, I forgot his name. What's the name?
Ideal Energies.
Ideal Energies. So on to number four. This is a motion to adopt the agenda. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Yep, I need to call that a second.
Hi, sorry, Micah.
By Brittany. Any questions or discussion, change the agenda, and perhaps moving on?
Yeah, and my phone just froze, of course. I mean, I could have.
I sent him emails.
Okay, if we, if we need to table that later, then we can watch it. I'm having, any other questions or discussion? Change? Nope. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Most, motion curious. Number five, public comments and rebel recognition.
I do have a rebel recognition, rebel recognition from Community Ed. Thank you to Mary Ann Martin and the special education team for all their special education support that they give to early childhood students and families. Your knowledge and expertise have been a great resource for us throughout the school year and summer. Thank you.
There's a lead right there. She wanted to comment. So let me tell the first couple of comments. Any other public comments?
The student of eighth graders had a fabulous trip to DC. So thank you to all the teachers and chaperones.
Sure, it's a great trip.
And the other one with David. They went together.
Love some of their folks.
Correct. Just a couple hundred people, that's fine.
Any other rebel recognition?
Guess I'll have a little more comment.
Sure. We'll go on to number six, 6.1 XL solar panel. This is Rich from Ideal Energies.
Right, Rich from Ideal Energies, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you for giving me the time to present to you tonight. Rich Raggett is from Ideal Energies, a partner there. We started our firm back in 2010, and since then, we've done half of all the commercial onsite solar that's been done in the state of Minnesota. And we kind of specialize in the school space, so we've done about 700 projects today. And we've done, we got about 300 projects in the school space. And we actually have 141 projects in the first five rounds of the solar for schools. So we've, and that's one of our focuses, we provide educational materials that can be incorporated into that a little bit. And just a little background on our company, we're also vertically integrated, have everything in our warehouse. And people on staff to do like the structural, detailed structural report that we'll provide as part of this to make sure both the schools are up for the additional two pounds of dead weight and another three or four pounds when you factor in the snow and wind here. So on to the third page of this, I wanted to show you that this is the, this is in Orno, their activity center, and it shows you that what we're talking about here is a self-balasted system. It just sits on top of the roof membrane. We don't puncture any of the membrane to get it down to the electrical room. We'll do things, if you have a roof warranty with it, to make sure that the roof warranty is avoided as part of the construction. We work with every roofing manufacturer in the state. We do like slip sheets that match the roofing surface. Or if you have it built up with gravel, we'll do kind of a foam pad that we use so that the rocks don't get pushed down as part of this. But we're very careful about the roofs, just to lay them out. And they're privately self-facing and a 10-degree pitch. We follow all the OSHA and code requirements for the city. And everything that needs to be accessed on the roof will have a walking path to it, including roof grains, HVAC units, or six feet from the roof that is, stuff like that. So we're really careful with how we go about this. So the next page, we're talking about not only the solar program, but we also get to leverage an opt-in tariff called the PV credit tariff. And we argued with XL Energy back from 2014 to 2019, and they finally agreed that helps them with their peak load capacities. So they're giving people that do solar, and they have a benefit of 7.113 cents for every kilowatt hour that's produced from the hours of one to seven. So that really makes us a better deal for you guys. And it's just, you check the box and you're entered into this, there's no qualifying. And that, along with the solar for schools grant, is a, makes it a great couple of projects for you. So I'll go on to showing you, I worked with Shannon and Chase to kind of figure out the areas that we work along with our structural engineer with the structure. And so based on this one, the high school, we're looking at about 183 kilowatts on this spot right here. And based on that, the next page, that 183 kilowatts is going to create $26,946 worth of energy savings. And just to let you know that, we go actuarial, we have your actual rate plan, which is a general service rate plan, and all the other fees associated with XL. We factor those in to come up with that number. So that's what you're going to save just with that one project here. We pay you rent revenue, so we can get up on the roof and operate and maintain it during the payback. So anything that goes wrong, we'll have our crews out here fixing it for you. So you have total revenue of $27,046. You're going to pay, this is an energy payment to our company that's divided by 12 on a monthly basis, or you can choose to do it once a year, once a year, however you want to do it. But that's what it will cost you for this. Then you've got to get a rider on your insurance policy, and that shouldn't cost you more than $500 annually. If it does, let me talk to the insurance company, we've done enough of these where we can get them in line. So you're going to have total expenses of $6,688. So year one, you're going to have a savings of $20,358. That's the second to last column is the savings on an annual basis, and the last column is on a cumulative basis. So you can see that for this project, after 20 years, you're looking at about $531,000 of electrical savings. Over the 30-year panel warranty, we're talking about $1,029,000. And over the life, we're looking at about $1.698 million savings. And that's what the life of the solar panel should last 40 years for you. There's no moving parts, they're heavy-duty, they should last for you. And so that's the one project on the high school here. Then the second project that we're looking at is the elementary school. And this one, we can get 336 kilowatts on the roof, on the areas that should work. So under the kind of the energy, annual energy expense savings summary, for this one, this will create $49,452 worth of savings. Again, we pay the rent revenue so we can operate and maintain it. Total revenue of $49,552. You're going to pay $11,340 first year. Also, you've got to get that rider on your insurance policy, this will be 800 because it's a larger system. Total expenses of $12,140. So with this project here, year one, you're going to have a savings of $37,412. And kind of the metrics down below, again, 20 years, you're looking at $979,000 worth of savings. 1.8 million over 30 years, and 40 years, you're looking at 3.2 million. One other thing I want to note on the middle column there, the insurance maintenance expense and utility fees. You can see that after, there's a 20-year payback with this. After the payback, if you guys want us to continue to operate and maintain the system, you're looking at about $6,500 worth of expense to do that. But you can see that you're going to be saving about $8,000 in that year, so it might make sense for you maybe not. But we're doing that for a lot of customers. And one other thing that you don't see here, because we compressed this, the inverters have a 12-year warranty. So in year 13, year 25, and year 37, we have a replacement event in that column that you're not seeing because it's condensed. I'm just showing you and telling you that I'm trying, we're trying to show everything that you might incur during the ownership of this. And they're already factored into these net numbers of savings. And on the following page, we just, we'll look at the two projects to kind of show you the savings again. After 20 years, you're looking at about 1.5 million of savings. After the 30-year panel warranty, 2.9 million. And 4.8 million over the life of the two projects here. Okay. And on to the next page. Feel free if you have questions, what do you answer. The next page, so how we do this, you guys own, that's the F E title owner on day one. There's no upfront cost to your district to do this. We monetize the tax credit and the grant and everything to kind of pay for it, and then we wait to get paid back over those 20 years. Your only financial obligation is to pay a steep discount on the energy that's created over those first 20 years. And then after 20 years, you get free energy. And we also, again, operate and maintain the system and have actually a department, we have two guys in there that'll be looking at, there's a monitoring package that we provide to all of our schools where they, you can get on and see the actual instantaneous. I'll get into it in a minute here, but that's what they're going to be looking at to see if your solar array is producing, and if there's something wrong with an inverter, panels, or whatever, we'll get out here and take a look and fix it. We also provide educational materials, and we've been doing it for about 12 years now. You don't have to use our materials, but we have a lot of stuff that's kind of geared towards the fifth and sixth grade science classes. And also the 11th and 12th grade kind of pathways programs. So if kids don't want to go to college, they have another area they can look at to see if there's some things that interest them. We also, they're designed around the three current learning standards in the state. Some pretty cool stuff, and we've gotten a lot of good feedback from some districts that have used it. The kids have loved it, so it's their free to use. Here's the monitoring that I talked about. And this will show you daily, weekly, monthly, annually, the production of the system. There's also some feel-good stuff here in the bottom right corner. It talks about how much CO2 emission was saved as a result of moving solar equivalent trees planted. Some cool stuff for kids to kind of, and that's basically the presentation from here to make sure you're good and move forward with these projects and sign the contract.
If you have questions, you know, as far as damage from natural events, I assume that's what the riders or the insurance program?
Yeah, especially hail.
Yeah.
Yeah, hail and wind, but we've had some, last year was a pretty big year for hail. So we kind of know the panels that you need to use to make sure that they're more durable. If you have a thinner glass that some people use, then you're going to, you're more apt to have some hail damage. And what we're talking about is a 3.2 millimeter thickness of glass that's pretty durable and is highly durable.
So with this up there, it's usually January, it's colder, it's not, there's 12 feet of snow. How much do we have to have somebody go up there and shovel the roof all the time to make sure those panels are visible to the sky?
No, there's a, we use what's called SAM's modeling through this program called Helioscope. And in that, they project that you guys will be producing like 1,225 watts of power for every watt of energy panel that's up on your roof. We know that's not true because we're operating and maintaining about 400 systems around the state. We know that it's going to be 1,125 kilowatt hours of power. So we've adjusted the numbers to make sure, we like to have happy customers, not angry ones where we over, you know, overestimate the production. So we're assuming there's going to be some winter events that might knock out the solar for two to three weeks at a time, and maybe a couple different events. But the thing is, you only produce about 2.4% of the energy during the whole year in like January and December. So you could go up there and blow it off or sweep it off and get better production, but it's not worth the manpower, so just let it be.
Whose expenses is it if we need to replace the roof, you know, solar panels are up there?
It would be your expense, but it takes, this is a question that pretty much every school district that we've done solar with, because it's a 40-year life, it'll cost you about a year, year and a half worth of savings to do that, we can do that for you, where you take it off and put it back.
So I understand, is the energy sold back into the grid, and then we just get a credit on that? Or we don't necessarily utilize that energy?
You will, it's behind the meter. So we hook into your electrical room, and so the energy that's created from the solar will be used first. You're not going to be off of the grid, so if you have some, need to supplement that, then you'll grab it from XL Energy. The other good thing about the PV credit tariff is they allow annual banking. So that if, as long as you use 100% of what you create, and you don't have any excess, then you're going to get full retail credit on your bill. So what happens is during those summer months, the four or five summer months where you produce a lot of energy, that'll sit on your bill as a kilowatt hour credit. So you're not selling it to XL Energy at a wholesale rate of 2.3 cents and paying the 13 or 14 cents that you guys are paying. So it's a, it's a good, good program.
The other question too is on the, we have a program that we are working with.
Yeah.
Would that have any effect on this, or?
It does, but we've done some research, and I think you have enough capacity based on what we've seen to, you're allowed to do both a solar garden and an onsite array as long as it's not more than 120% of your previous twelve months of consumption. So it should be good.
And that's part of our process, saying the questions that I kind of figured with them too.
Yeah. Because we did that about six years before.
And what would be the timeline for this if we decided?
Well, we were talking about earlier, number one, we have to get everything approved, and that part of it is Excel and looking through that, and what's, you know, are they going to agree to it or whatever? And then the grant, getting the grant, and then if that'll go through, we were just talking, then it'll probably be spring of '25 before we would be able to.
The Department of Commerce is supposed to tell everybody that was in the program. We had 30 customers that loaded in this last round by July 7th, but every time they told us to date, they have not met their obligations. We meet all the ones that they come up with, but they get to do what they want, I guess. So we're at their ready.
Just in my conversations with other superintendents, the other thing that I did some background checking, they all look like you use more or get more. So their experience has been positive, and so that's what it is with Rich. And it made it easier to have more conversation just because, whatever, I heard on the street, I guess.
Other questions for Rich?
We did not have a resolution or anything for a contract tonight because we got to make sure, we can do that in July, we just wanted to make sure we had this meeting tonight, they got to hear from you. We can have discussions, so in two weeks, we have another board meeting.
Okay, you guys never wrote on this stuff tonight?
No, I just wanted to make sure these guys heard it, so then we will take it, and then at our next board meeting, then we can have a resolution and approve the contract.
Hopefully, we won't be needing to get them up for that.
No, 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 we will. Rich, that's, I just wanted to make sure. Our way, is it two times we need to, this will be the first reading, or a second meeting?
It's a wonderful three and a half.
No, it is, it is.
We're all familiar.
No, so Rich, not at all, so we just wanted to make sure, I wanted to make sure they have time to digest it and whatnot, and then in two weeks, we have another meeting and we'll approve it at that.
For sure, sounds good. And just another note, your attorney that you had mentioned. We're doing another project with a different district that, I think that was Columbia Heights. Was it the school district that the same attorney? So you're using that paperwork and just populated it with your stuff, so you'll get a little better deal from the attorney, and he's already blessed.
Yep, he did, he sent me an email and said, hey, this is perfect because I'm doing another one for another school. So I'll just kind of loop it together, so, yeah. So we will have that, and then we'll have these guys approve, decide what they want to do, I guess, I'll say it that way.
You have both Chase and Brown's?
Yep, Chase has been a part of all the conversations.
And what is, what are his thoughts?
Yeah, he feels the same way, I guess. His first question is, what is everybody else saying about it? You know, what are the other schools saying? So then when Chase and I have met about it, it was the same thing, the other superintendent said, this has got in the building, Brown's people, I don't know if he's reached out to them or not, but I don't know.
I think I gave you a handful of guys, and you don't want to get them.
Chase has been positive too, good, thanks for asking.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Rich. Safe travels. Go on to 6.12. This is Cynthia Dilworth. Is the clicker up there? Perfect, you just have to turn it on on the side, and then you have control of the... It worked from there earlier for me. It said it's green if you...
It vibrated and everything.
It did, well, that's good. It was there earlier. What's that?
Oh, it's like a... On the back.
You got to do a little dance. Maybe you can just give me the signal, and then, you know. We're perfect, right there. That's usually how it goes. Vibrated.
Does the USB come unseated from the computer maybe? You know, it didn't work for stop, that time, I wonder if it's because we're recording.
I don't know. I don't want to hit refresh, is it going to mess it all up?
Yeah, don't touch it.
Well, it's not even letting me move the...
You can touch the thing, touch the board, you can touch the board.
All right, well, we're going to find out. It's just like it's...
It's down in the left-hand corner of the...
Okay. See if it works now.
You can just tell me, and I'll...
There you go.
Give me the call to say.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for having me this evening. Actually, more importantly, thank you for getting me out of my city council meeting, that's all I can go there. Right now, I'm a little worried I'll get back, and they'll say, oh, yeah, I don't need you there anyways. And run without me. And so you're actually like guinea pigs in giving this presentation. For those that don't know me, my name is Peyton, I'm the city administrator over in Dilworth. Yeah, so you'll be our first presentation, but I thought there'd be no more corporate group than a school board to give a referendum of what should sound like. Presentation to you, being as familiar as you are with them, and you would, man, thank you. So this is kind of the backdrop of everything right here, new community center for our growing city. And just setting it up here, the city wants to make appropriate investments back into the community. And so we're moving forward with plans to replace our existing community center, which I guess is not existing anymore, it's been taken down, we'll probably have a new fire hall going in at the current location. And so we're fast approaching the November election, and that's when this is all going to be decided. But it's supposed to be known now. That deadline really is expedited because of the early voting. We take in a multitude of early votes, I think 25, 30, 40% of our voters are Dilworth early voters. So you really have to be ready that 46 days before an election to get the word out to the best of your abilities. So at the current, well, at the previous community center in town, it was co-located with our fire department, about 40 years in age. And we, we had a facilities plan that was done several years ago. I think we commissioned that late 2020, early 2021. And it identified a few things that we were trying to accomplish for the new facility, but more so point out the deficiencies of the existing one. Right, there was no designated areas to support a wide range of meetings. When I moved up here, I'm from Kentucky, and people said, you know, we have this community center here in town. I went over there, and we're, oh, we have a social hall. That's all it is, just a social hall, that's from my page, right? I mean, it's a general small-town community center, but that's all it was. It was a, it was a great facility, but we've really moved beyond that lifespan of it. We want to have more multipurpose functional spaces inside. A little bit better storage, mechanical equipment, all that stuff is all accounted for. And so we, that facility study was done and showed that we do need a new facility, which wasn't a surprise to too many there. And yes, and sort of the big thing, and yeah, kind of the big thing we were working through that there was determined that the fire hall, which is where we're reconstructed this time, could not be located there at that existing space for seventeen reasons. We did put out a survey at the time we were doing our study back in '21 to get some of the, you know, some of the highlights of what we would like to see in there. And these are the things that are going to be included in it. So more community space for various activities, which is kind of what we have right now. I don't believe we're envisioning something much larger than that. That build, that, I think that could take in 300 people, maybe a little larger than that. That really wasn't the issue with the facility. But we did miss out on opportunity for that youth and senior programming in town with some other multi, multipurpose spaces inside. Storage, modern kitchen facility, new equipment and technology. One thing to do, one point out though, is there on the right-hand side, about the opportunity for expansion box over there. So envision a, envision a box, right? So where this is going to go, we've got this nice old cutout here of the box. And within that box, we've got four little boxes. Our local option sales tax is going to be doing this first box, so phase one will call it. And that's what this local option sales tax is going to be funded. What it will not be inclusive of, but it's going to be setting us up for the future, some of these other amenities that we talk about here. You know, sort of like an indoor walk-on-track, a playground, daycare, fitness spaces. And some of those items that we're talking about inside the facility, that's going to be, come along with partnerships that we're forging and funding through different mechanisms. So this area that you see here on the east end of town, so right as you're coming through from, coming from here from Linden, as you enter there on the right-hand side, we have a new rail district that's been constructed out there, multiple commercial businesses, women's industry and all that. So the planning commission, city council, both in early April, agreed upon a location where they would like to see this facility located. In working with the developers and the planning commission and other interested individuals, this is the location that was determined. And with that, as you can see right now, it's shaded there in yellow, we have the existing roadways in place, so technically we wouldn't have to do community expansion. It's all part of a larger master plan concept that we have going on in the east end of town. And this is one of those first steps in that whole dynamic out there.
How large is that space?
That's about 10 acres.
And then you're going to use how much of it initially, what are you thinking?
For us, not 100% sure. It wouldn't shock me if this is three plus acres. Also keep in mind that we're going to be probably constructing a parking lot and other things too. I mean, also keep in mind that we're going to be probably constructing a parking lot and other things to that. So it's kind of hard to quantify. I mean, it's going to be used for all these different facilities out there. We have been to talk to the healthcare provider to locate out there, daycare provider as well and other interested parties. Again, this has to be a public-private partnership that we're doing. This can't just be us raising funds. Or, you know, through the local option sales tax, paying for things that bind me, whatever it may be, to fund this whole concept that we would love to see beyond just this sort of whole space. For one to see all the, this other programming, the healthcare partner and all that, we haven't had the private side involved in it. So that's what we're really focusing our efforts on this time and creating those relationships. I mentioned earlier that we've done an online survey, so we have been trying to take in community input as we work and go along with this whole process there. And this, this just provides some steps that occurred a long way. So back in twenty-one, we started that study. We had a, you know, committee forum that's comprised of various individuals in town, landowners out there in that general area, as well as just other interested individuals in terms of our planning mission that, you know, helps set the priorities and strategic initiatives out there in that general area. Then last May, we formally received authorization from the state of Minnesota to potentially have some local option sales tax provokers. And that's actually a ride that's been, there's a hold on right now in the state, so we got in just in the correct time. There's more referendum in place right now. There's some various conversations going on on both sides. And so any city that went down this year to get approval from the legislature was not able to. There's still a hold on it even next year as well. So we got in right under, right over there, right over there. So getting down to the numbers on it. So we have a projected cost here of seven point two million dollars. Now, one thing to do, I want to point out, that was a twenty-twenty-two estimate as a highlight there. We all know the process is going to go up and be higher, but we want to be reflective of the number that we had at that time. Also knowing at that time, we didn't exactly have a identified location yet. So, you know, all these factors may, you know, weigh into the factor of what could end up being there. If approved, it will generate about six point one million dollars, I'll just remind us somewhere in there. The estimates show about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year that we had bring in from the local option sales tax. And we have really, so the cities have really seen a move in this side of things, especially from the online sales. Now that people get from sales tax, at one time, those revenue dollars weren't able to be collected and withheld within a community. But now anything that you purchase online from your Dilworth address, being shipped to your address, gets back, gets thrown in as part of the local option sales tax. And obviously, we have a really sizable commercial business involved in town as well. That's going to help boost that number too. And that's also a number that we're going to continually monitor, that six point one, or not the six point one million dollars, but that two hundred fifty thousand dollar number. Just to see if we can get a more defined number, the closer that we get to it. A lot of cities, most cities, in my experience that I've been speaking with, they're collecting funds much faster than what they originally thought they were going to. A variety of reasons. You ran the numbers in a week and back. They're settling pretty well there. The other funding would come from a combination of taxes, maintenance, probably some of the facility revenues and other sources. That gets back to the whole private partner, private, public partnership, public-private partnership that I was discussing earlier. So there's different mechanisms and tools that we can use to incentivize development and growth in that area. So they help us fill in those other boxes at the same time. You get questioned about the fire station as well all the time, you know, and, you know, how are we paying for that? That's insecure. There are other funding sources, some of it's locally, but we're also the recipient of four point four million dollars from the state bonding bill dollars. Also receiving nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from the federal government as well. So we are over that fifty percent mark and being able to fund a new, you know, ever take ten million dollar facility. And so while local sales tax, the council chose to go that route because the costs can be shared by, obviously, all the residents, but anyone else that may take advantage of our facility in the community and spend money, tax dollars in our town. So we have most of our customers coming to wall our, sort of, with residents, but they may be a utilization, utilizer of the community center. And we do view this as a regional draw for people. Most renters, as I said, most renters of our community center in town, they're actually not dealing with the residents, the one that we previously had. I think a lot of people think it's just deal with the residents from in the town. Majority of people have written out. While that's just because it's affordable and all that, but still, I think it's important to make for everybody. And if we don't do the property, so the property tax increase will be another alternate, but obviously that could just be a Dilworth only share. It's not a permanent, it's not a permanent tax. It goes on until we get that six point one million dollar number or until, or twenty-five years, whichever hits first. I'm thinking it's going to be that six point one million dollars a bunch of fast right there. Because we have, that's another FAQ we get all the time. Well, once this hits six point one million dollars, you're just going to direct it elsewhere. Legally, you can't do that. You all know that. You can't just go pay salaries with it. Unfortunately, we don't have that capability. And the sales tax, the same exemptions apply, clothing, groceries, baby products, and hygiene products, all the same exemptions apply for, that you get going out to normal purchase areas.
Can I ask for, for farmland owners? Oh, that's in the Dilworth.
It's strictly just products that you're purchasing now. So it's going out to retail business. Nothing to do with properties, land values, anything like that. Anything that's strictly just sales tax on items purchased in the community. What if it fails? What if it goes down? Well, then we'll reconnect with everybody, go back to your own board, so to speak, at this point, there's no plan B. And it would, yeah, most likely see a delay in construction. A little different to, between cities and school districts, you know, oftentimes if the school board referendum fails, you know, again, the groups come together, kind of determine what needs to change, we modify, get together and go back to the voters. Cities are a little different. We're, we're more regulated as far as how often we can go back to the old estimates. It's going to be a general election cycle or when our, when our city council is up for an election. And you don't see that nearly as often as we're like going back and requesting to go back again. There'd have to be process and significant changes to, because you got to keep in mind, we have to get state authorization, open lobby, just to be, have this on going out. And make your voice heard, right? So we get out, voting is on November fifth and whoever wants to vote for this thing will. But as I said, in September twenty, the deadline really changes things for people. We're going to do our best to educate the public on how to vote early, where to vote early. You know, voting now is going to be held at the Lutheran church. There's a big educational component goes to all of this by just getting out the word about the election. We're trying to do our best to educate everybody who, you know, can ask for a vote, you say. And this is where we want to be directing people, to DilworthOnTrack.com. This is the info that has everything that I covered today and handles all those FAQs, voting information, what the cost and impact is. We also have some, lots of informational brochures as well that we hand out to everyone. But for what's such a really good, it's a really high traffic volume actually. But we want to direct as many people there as we can to answer questions concisely and to cover all of our bases. And with that said, we leave. That's all we have. Can I answer any questions?
When, when the construction starts, if it does pass?
Yeah, November. So in the event that it were to pass, we'd go in right away and start engineering design. I would anticipate that lasting every bit of a year, if not more. So that's, so that's all the way through twenty-five. I think twenty-six at the earliest when we can see construction take place out there.
Are you envisioning something kind of like the West Fargo Rusted Center?
Yes.
That's what I envisioned, but I didn't know if there's.
And we went out to multiple sites, including the Rusted Center and a lot of those amenities they have inside. So again, what we're doing with our first phase here is not going to fund all of that. Perhaps we open the, with the public partnership, that we can get to some of those amenities that they all have as well. A couple of questions. The meat box store, Walmart, things like that, probably not going to affect them a whole lot. But is this, you know, even though it's a half a cent or a half percent, it's also, you think you're going to have a little less support from the smaller business owners on, I mean, all of our requests points are at the top and with their buying or in a smaller one, have to increase again. Is that going to shift some of that business? We're back to Morehead instead of Dilworth? Right. Well, keep in mind, they already have their own sales tax over there, so we're actually behind everybody else and the county has their. Well, most, again, this according to, we hired a communication strategist that helped us put together a lot of this. One of the things that Pete's saying through all this, there's generally not a lot of weighing support in that regard. People didn't look pretty supportive in that sense, knowing that's going to be spread to everybody and the cost and the impact is relatively minimal. I guess you're kind of asking a, it's a hard question to answer, you know, I'm not really sure what the full reaction will be. But our goal is to go out and connect and engage with all the business owners. They are understanding of the impact that it may potentially have with them because while they may have all these same taxes in Morehead, which is what they're doing in the library with right now, maybe that's something that's attractive to them that's keeping them in Dilworth right now. So it is something that you have to balance weight through the whole process. Will we, will we be reporting this, will we be the same entity as we were before? Yeah, that's, it's a little bit of a TBD. I think in my ideal world, this would be something that is, that has a private investment in it and that would be part of that. Like maybe it'd be a situation where we own, lease out the land to a private entity. I'm just going to say the YMCA for example, you know, and they would be the one for running the facility. So right now, the city of Dilworth did everything. We booked people coming in all. It's not user friendly. It's, I'm sorry, the current system, it's still up to book or try to do events, was not user friendly at all. Right. It just was. Yeah. So if it's the same entity that's running that ran that and is going to run this, will it be different other than it's new and shiny? But you would still have the same problems on that side. So I don't want it to not be successful if you have the same issues from before. Right, right. And that was kind of the, and again, for my advantage, the city probably doesn't need to be in the rental industry, especially as we're getting into a larger type of, you know, larger type of businesses that are going to be operating within it. And others clearly know that though, and we, yeah, we want to make it as efficient and effective as possible. But on the flip side, we never made any bones about this wasn't a, you know, this isn't a Holiday Inn or some kind of mass rental facility over there. We, yeah. Also are having issues trying to use the facilities and they don't, because there's a lot that don't, and that should tell you something right there that too.
I think it's a great opportunity for the city of Dilworth. I'm very excited about it. I have a parent that lives in Dilworth. He's lived there for forty-seven years and I think he's happy that you're not putting on property tax after the whole, you know, redoing the streets and stuff. Just his little old house was, you know, almost ten thousand dollars to replace, you know, just a little part in front of his home. So definitely, I think the Lions are talking about it. Let's just put it that way, the Dilworth Lions. So hopefully you go over and talk to them and give them the pep talk.
Yeah, we hope, yeah, we see, this is everyone's facility, right? And so we want everyone to have a voice and we want everyone to participate in the process and give us feedback and other things that they would like to see go into the facility. At the end of the day, it's their, their decision.
The website was a good idea. I've sent a few people to it already and it's got a lot of great information, even if it's in the beginning stages.
Absolutely. Money well spent.
I think as you do these presentations too, Peyton, and by the way, nice job with the presentation. As the guinea pigs.
Yes, right, yes.
But it's informative, right? It's got the information that people need and then it leads you to a website that you do your own research, right? So awesome.
That's what we want to do and we had the numbers, but the traffic to it is surprisingly, it's like really hot. It's amazing. So we, we have scheduled social media posts that go out there. There's certain spikes at certain times of the day. Sure you have. It's all identified out in the schedule that we're, you know, that we have going on there. And yeah, this is, again, this is our first presentation, so maybe we'll, right, but. The call now will get to Stan.
She's going to travel with it, yeah.
Any other questions?
I'm in support of it.
Any other questions for Peyton?
This is also a one pager. I just, I don't know if I want these, maybe I got them. Is there any literature that needs to go out to families? We can do that or provide that or make any other presentation. That's another thing too, why we're wanting to engage with everyone here is, you know, we don't know every group to go out and engage with, right? So there may be other sports organizations, some of the, you have umbrella, right, that may be trying to assist in this. And so we're all working between all ideas that you have, making ourselves available, chatter out, go out through, we should all here. And we're just all about educating the public. That's all we're trying to do.
And we'll, we'll make sure we have copies of this at the district office. I'll, I'll give these to Brooke or we'll make sure it gets back there so we can have them available.
Absolutely.
So they can see it as well.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Well, if you have any other questions, I'm going to slow them on like that. You got to feel the show going on.
Take your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peyton.
All right. Let's go on to six point three, budget. Um, I think we talked a little bit about aspects of the budget, a budget committee meeting and the work session. Um, we're working through that. Obviously, it's, right now, we're trying to set the budget we're following for the next year. And I think we have a very budget.
Yep.
So I don't know, Shannon, if you've got any updates, but maybe we'll just save that for the, for the.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a tight year because we're not getting a huge chunk from the state. We have a lot of mandates that are, that are part of the new legislation last couple of years that are not really funded this next year. So.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the Cliff Notes version is the state gave us four percent a year ago that had a lot of mandates. Seventy-six mandates that were tied to public education that ate up two to two and a half percent of that four percent. Now those mandates are still there and the state's going to give us two percent new money. Well, the two percent is getting eaten up by mandates and there's not much left over. And that's, we're in a tighter spot, no question. And so, and that's the Cliff Notes version of, that's where it is, right? It's tied to mandates for the most part.
Okay, I talked about our concern with kindergarten numbers right now. Not where we're, where we're hoping they were to be because last year we were at one thirty-ish.
We ended up with one thirty-four.
And then right now we have, what's the number today? Eighty. Have we generated any leads based on the sign?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I haven't signed any new, but it's been a week, so it's better off. Again, if you're out there and you have a kindergartner, please.
Sign up.
Please sign up. Please register. Yep. So that's a big issue. Twenty new kindergartners over the summer, which has been typical, would go a long way. Thirty would go longer. But anyway, that's kind of what we're.
How about fifty?
Fifty is fine, you know, fifty. Yeah, we could do fifty actually. The number is where it is. That would get us to where we are today then. So yes, we would do that. Thanks.
Any questions or comments on the budget committee? All right, let's go on to the board work session. I don't know. Let's tackle that, but I guess, you know, we talked a little bit about the strategic plan, where we're at, some of that. Um, we know we're basically the last three years, kind of a look back at some of the things that we've done over the last three years, the things that we've accomplished. And then just a little, I don't know, maybe not a review, but a little bit of review, Shannon, of what Benny's done. over the last three years. I don't know, is there anything else that you guys?
Okay, you're looking at me, so I was like.
I was looking for the end.
Yeah, I just, I just think it was a good work session. We also talked about FY twenty-five and some of the things we're all going to accomplish in the year coming up. And then obviously this last year, what we accomplished are things that were accomplished, so. Yeah, it's, it's just good to meet like that and kind of just more visit about what's been happening or what's going to happen. It's just kind of a nice atmosphere, I guess, so.
That was very good. Any other, any questions or comments on the work session? All right, let's go on to six point four, superintendent approach.
Hey, mine is really short tonight, just, I knew we had a lot of other things tonight with the solar panel presentation from Ideal Energies and then obviously Peyton. So just during our work session, we talked about the August board meetings, so they're going to be on the fifth and nineteenth now. And that's because we have board elections and people have to get signed up or get their names in as a nomination, or not a nomination, but as a candidate. So the fifth and the nineteenth will be our August board meetings. And then fund budget, so this is, I did enrollment at the last board meeting, this one I was going to do funds two and four. I'm not doing it tonight because we had all these other presentations. So I will do fund two and fund four presentations in joint. And then we'll get into more details on the whole budget after that. So just kind of a breakout so public can kind of see, fund one cannot spill over, I'm sorry, fund two or fund four can't spill into one, but our general budget can go into there to bail them out if we need to, so I'll talk about that a little bit. Next month, so I guess if there, if there's anything else for me, and that's tonight, I was just going to kind of keep it simple. But, anything?
All right, well, thank you, Shannon. Let's go on to seven point one. This is a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes on two ten. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Questions or discussion? All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Go on to the consent agenda. Eight point one, approve the bills for June twenty twenty-four in the amount of?
Two hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-two cents.
Your treasurer's monthly question comes part of your packet in there. We had a chance to look at that. It's also approved the resignation of Mary Ann Martin, special education director, June three of twenty twenty-four. Prove the resignation of Cassidy Diggia, elementary teacher effective the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Improve the resignation of Mackenzie Parala, her professional, effective the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay.
Amy.
Amy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Lindsay. I'm not trying to force you into doing that.
That's okay.
Any questions or discussion?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment, Mary Ann Martin has given pretty much her whole career to the Diggia Public School. And so I just think it's an appropriate time to say thank you to her. I know you guys have each shared with her a little bit over the last few months as this transition's happening with her, especially going to Lake Agassy. But I just want to publicly say thank you to Mary Ann and all the things she's done for our school and for our students, so.
Thank you.
Definitely wish her well in her human endeavors.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
Did she give, I mean, I know that's a personnel thing, but she came and presented to our board and said that everything was good and now we have a resignation and obviously I missed our work session, so maybe I missed something there, but.
Yep, she took a job with Lake's Country Service Cooperative. So she's going to work on Fergus Falls instead of at Holly. So she got offered a job there for Lake's, Lake's Country Service Cooperative, it's kind of, and I don't want to misspeak, it's like a coordinator overseeing all the directors in the region and she's going to help Lake's Country with that, so. She, she was looking at that before and kind of decided she would stay with Lake Agassy and then had more conversations, I guess, so, yep. So with that happening, then obviously we have the contract with her still. And so then when she came back and decided to go to Lake's Country instead of Lake Agassy, then she said she would have to resign her positions because she'll have a contract with her, so, yep.
Any other questions or comments? All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. On to nine point one. This is a motion to approve the designation of the Northwestern Bank of Dilworth MSD LAF and MSD NAX as official depositaries for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mike, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion?
I think I maybe asked this a couple of years ago, but is there a reason we don't switch between the different banks that are in? I mean, I know that that's a process, but some of the other schools I've worked in as a student, they have like kind of shared the love between the banks and town.
So I don't want to speak out here and I know we do share a little love in the, so we use Northwestern for this, but we use.
No. Remmer.
Remmer we use. Yeah, yes, we do.
We just live in the different parts of the country.
Always open for discussion.
Got all the different questions tonight, sorry.
That's okay, that's fine, I, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. On to nine point two. This is a motion to set the district wide impressed fund at a replenishable maximum of six thousand dollars effective July first, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five and authorize Marcus Escbig, Brooke Delka and Shannon Hunstead to sign and issue checks. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion? It is. Here are more questions or discussion, all those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. Nine point three, this is a motion to authorize treasurer or Shannon Hunstead superintendent of schools to invest the school district cash pursuit to work policy effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay.
Amy.
Amy, sorry.
That's your second.
A second.
Laura said she's going to second.
Laura's going to second, okay. Why not?
Any questions or discussion? All right, all those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. On to nine point four, fiscal year twenty-five budget. This is to approve the fiscal year twenty-five preliminary budget as presented. Do I have a motion? Motion by Nicole, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by more. Questions or discussion?
Yeah, so if you look at it, our, our general fund is looking at a three hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar deficit spending. As you guys recall from the last few years, we do this very conservatively because it's kind of what we have to be. That's with our current enrollment, I'm sorry, that's with fifteen thirty-five as an enrollment. We are projecting right now with our seventy or eighty kindergartners, we're right around that number. So anything we get above and beyond the fifteen thirty-five will obviously, and you know, just easy math, it's not exactly this, but if you figure about nine thousand, it's, okay, it's a little more than that, but it's not worth counting because that's that buffer too. That's one thing, so you figure twenty times nine thousand, okay, you can cut that in more than half, right? And so that's, this is a conservative number because it's kind of what we have today. This also has to figure in benefit packages for all of our employees because they all could take it. If they don't, then there's obviously, this gets cut out of that. So enrollment and benefits are two probably the biggest factors that could bring this number back down. Enrollment being obviously the biggest factor, so. My hope with this three hundred and ten, as conservative as it is with all of our numbers across all budgets, that we can, we can get it down closer to a hundred pretty quick. And then it's just a matter of, okay, we're going to manage our spending, so can we kind of zero it out by the end of the year? That's my hope. It was looking way worse than that, if you remember in our budget meetings, and we were looking at an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit. So we've had some adjustments there to help get it down to three ten, but still need more kindergartners. Twenty more kindergartners, that would really go a long way, so.
Any other, any questions or Shannon on the budget?
I, I apologize, but I should say to you, food services can have a little bit of a surplus based on that community head. And if you look at this year's, as we close out this year, community head is showing a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar deficit next year. That's based on today's numbers, now we know that, again, that's ultra conservative, that number is going to be better. This year, we're going to finish out with a positive again in the community head. But that, without knowing how that's going to end, you got to play it this way, just to be safe. And so just wanted you to understand that, that this number, a hundred and seventeen, anytime you get about a hundred thousand dollar deficit, that's there kind of as a buffer, most of the time that's a zeroed out account. We should, we should be able to get it back to zero. But you also have to play it safe because if it doesn't, because if there's factors we can't control. I can say that there's different things that happen in a school year with staffing. We have a, just for next year, we have about a hundred thousand dollar additional cost in staffing in our K twelve education that we didn't, no way you could plan for, but it's still a hundred thousand. So it's kind of the same here, things can happen and, yeah, we can only control so much. That's why I always like to keep that buffer, so.
Any other, any questions or comments or concerns?
If you, sorry, I keep interrupting you now, but the other thing, if you look at this budget, it's a three point eight nine percent increase overall in spending. And our but, our revenue is like two point four overall total package from the state and local and all that. So there's your, because every percent in our budget is about a hundred and ninety thousand. So you're looking at two percent, that is a two percent. So it's, I'm just trying to give you a perspective of, we're a hundred thousand ghosts, it's, it's less than a percent of our budget, so.
Even all our legislators.
Yeah, and honestly, if you got rid of the mandates, we'd be fine. So same money, less mandates.
You got to hear from us.
Yes. Yeah, just so you know, we are meeting, the Clay County superintendents are meeting on Thursday and then we're setting a meeting up with our local legislators for July, for senators and representatives from our region. So to talk about this.
This is a good idea. Every school across the state is having difficulties. It's worth noting that we're not, we're not alone here. A lot of, a lot of communities, a lot of schools that have operated referendums.
Or are well be going out to the voters this, this November with operating, yeah, close by.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. On to nine point five, this is a motion to approve rights specialty insurance, the property general liability, audible prime inland marine, directors and operators in excess and risk administration service providers for the fiscal year twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any questions or discussion?
I think we discussed this quite a bit before, but.
We have discussed it, but it's.
Yep, one of the things that we're raising our deductible to fifty thousand from ten. It's going to be about a thirty thousand dollar increase, but our square footage was not up to speed in the past. Now we have the entire building and complex covered, which is important.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. On to nine point six, this is for a motion to approve a resolution establishing the dates for filing affidavits of candidacy for the office of school board members. Do I have a motion? Motion by Nicole, do I have a second? All right, a little bit of.
Be as resolved by the school board in school district number two one six four as follows. Period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the office of school board member of district number twenty-one sixty-four shall begin on Tuesday, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, it closes on Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Affidavit of candidacy must be filed in our office of the school district clerk in the district office in Dilworth in the two dollar filing fee paid prior to five o'clock PM on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be published in the form of the official district at least two weeks prior to the first date of filing affidavits of candidacy. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be posted at the administrative office of the district date prior to the first date of filing affidavits of candidacy. A notice of said filing dates shall be in substantially the following form. Notice is hereby given that the period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the office of school board number twenty-one sixty-four shall begin on Tuesday, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, closes at five o'clock on Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. The general election shall be held on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four. At that election, four members will be elected to the school board for terms of four years each. Affidavits of candidacy are available from the school district office. As one thirteen First Avenue Northwest Dilworth, Minnesota, five six five two nine. The filing fee for this office is two dollars. A candidate for this office must be an eligible voter, must be twenty-one years of age or more on assuming office, must have an resident in the school district. See this election three days before the general election and must have no other affidavit on file for any other office other than the same general election. The affidavits of candidacy must be filed in the office of the school district clerk in the district office in Dilworth in the filing fee paid prior to five PM on Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Very good. Any questions or discussion? We do this with our elections. This resolution is sold, it will roll call, Brett, Amy, Cole.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
Lindsay.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Mike. Resolution passed. Okay, we'll go on to nine point seven, this is a motion to approve the contract for Brittany John, director of the fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six school years. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay.
I'll second.
Second by, any questions or discussion?
This is just like a stipend to her additional contract that we did last year.
Yep, this one was on hold because I was waiting to see what was going to happen with Lake Agassy and Mary Ann and all that. And so Brady and I have been talking the whole time, so once all that kind of got finalized, they sat, we sat down and got it. Yep, it's kind of like for Katie, the high TIB's director, stipend, it's the same kind of.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. Nine point eight, this is to approve non-certified contract for Robert Munson, professional class two, step ten, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any questions or discussion?
He will be in the high school, so you don't.
Hearing no other questions or discussion, all those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. Nine point nine, this is approved certified contract for Hannah, pre-middle school facts teacher, BA, step one, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay. Do I have a second? Let's get a second. I love your fashion. Any questions or discussion?
We found a facts teacher.
Yes.
Great.
It's awesome. Hearing no other questions or discussion, all those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. On to nine point ten, this is for the certified contract for Caitlin Nelson Street, elementary teacher, BA, step four, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four. effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion? Motion by Brittany, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Uh, any questions or discussion?
What grade level is this?
She is the third grade. Yep, we have a medical leave, so, yep, this one would be for that position.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those with favor say aye.
Aye.
All those. Motion carries. On to nine point eleven, this is for a certified contract for Michaela Backland, elementary teacher, M A. plus thirty, step ten, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion? Motion by Brittany. Do I have a second? Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion?
Uh, this is the kindergarten to replace every resignation we had earlier. Yep.
Any other questions? All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
All those. Motion carries. On nine point twelve, this is approved the certified contract for Kara Dollinger, middle school math teacher, B A., step three, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those with favor say aye.
Aye.
All those. Motion carries. Ten point one, the next school board meeting will be Monday, July eighth, at six P M. here in the DGF community room, and following that will be the facilities transportation committee meeting. I'm about to eleven. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Nicole, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion? All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
All those. Motion carries.